Great, well, good evening and thanks to all of you who have joined us. I'd like to call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for September thirteenth to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leon?
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Councilor Hoy, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any additions or deletions to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting?
No.
No, okay. I don't have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, and the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the previous consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Leon?
It was second by Stapleton.
Okay, you guys all sound alike sometimes. You have to raise your hand. Okay, Stapleton, you get the credit. No, it's an eternity in the minutes to be a second. It really is. It's a, it's a great thing to do.
One more and she'll have a set of steak knives. So we have item three point one. Three point one A, August ninth, two thousand twenty-one draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes. Item three point three A, appointment to the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Is there any discussion? Recorder, please call a roll.
There was a hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Who's hands up? Stapleton. Oh!
Just me. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited for Jason, who's joining the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board. He serves on the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and he's going to be a great addition. I'm really thankful for him for stepping up and serving his community in this way. Thanks.
Great. Well, that's certainly what we found at the Boards and Commissions meeting, too, is we're really pleased with them. Okay, any further discussion? If the recorder please call a roll.
Board Member? Board Member Gonzalez?
Here. Yes.
Board Member Hoy? Board Member Nordike?
Hi.
Board Member Lewis is absent. Board Member Stapleton?
Hi.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leon?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. We have no public hearings, no special orders of business, so we'll go to information reports. Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke earlier today with Ms. Rutherford about six A, the UGM saffron site redevelopment, and I have to say, I'm pretty excited about three of the ten lots being used for a portable housing and managed by either the Salem Housing Authority or a partner. And I'm wondering if Executive, excuse me, Urban Development Director Rutherford could just give us a little more information on how that's going to occur, because this is a great thing. Not only do we need to bring people downtown, we need to bring people of all income ranges downtown, not just folks who can afford some of the higher level condos and apartments. So if Director Rutherford could just speak to that briefly, I'd appreciate it.
Kristin, go ahead.
Absolutely. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. It's very exciting to be bringing forward this as an information item and moving on to the next steps. You know, this is a vision that we have been implementing, starting a few years ago with acquisitions of the saffron property and the mission. We have acquired most of the block between Front Street, Commercial Street, and Chomekada and Marion. And we will be moving forward with demolition of the properties that we have under control this winter. That will be our next step. We are going through some lot line adjustment processes. We'll be undertaking that through the next several months to carve out the piece that we will be retaining for the Housing Authority or a future developer partner for affordable housing. We intend to take the remainder property to market through a request for qualifications from developers to come forward with their qualifications and ideas on what would work best and be most marketable and add value to the downtown on the remaining parcels. As a part of that request for qualification, we are prioritizing there a mix of housing types with some market rate and some affordable housing in the land that will be going to a private sector developer in addition to the land that we are retaining for the Housing Authority. So we will have, you know, at the, which would be the southeast corner of the property, which is kind of where Runaway Arts was there on the corner of Chomekada and Commercial. That's the area that would be retained for affordable housing. Then the remainder property, we would have affordable housing interspersed on that side as well in a market rate development. So, you know, looking to undertake all of that work and get some hopefully exciting development proposals towards the spring and then enter into a development agreement with whichever organization best meets our needs or we think will be a best partner on the remainder in terms of the affordable component and the Housing Authority site. We're pretty busy with the Housing Authority right now. We need to get Yaquena wrapped up and launched, and we've got Redwood Crossings in development. So we're probably still, you know, a year and a half, two and a half years away from having the internal capacity to really get going on the Housing Authority piece. So we will start focusing on the private sector side first. And then as we have some of our other really critical projects underway with the Housing Authority, then we'll shift focus, you know, hopefully, hopefully starting that development process in about a year to a year and a half.
Great, great. Any, Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the previous two questioners asked the questions I was going to ask, but I wanted to just say how excited I am about this project. I think it's the perfect thing to be doing for this, this property. And I do just want to throw a note of caution out, and I know that you know this, Ms. Rutherford, but I want to make sure my colleagues are aware. Our Housing Authority staff is pretty much tapped out. We have basically over maximized our resource, and I don't see us adding a significant property to their portfolio until we beef up the staff level. So I just want everybody to be aware of that, that we are, we're at the max with our staff there, and we're going to need to have some, some investment in order to really make projects like this viable in the future.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate you mentioning that. And that is one of the reasons that we specify Housing Authority or a development partner here. This, this particular project may be better suited for a, bringing in a partner to work with the Housing Authority on it.
Ms. Rutherford, or City Manager Powers, will there be any kind of recognition of the situation we've got at the Housing Authority in terms of its staffing, in terms of the need for housing on as timely a manner as possible during our budget cycle? Are we going to see some potential additions there? Are we holding back any ARPA money? I mean, are we doing anything to kind of get ready for for this series of projects, which, and, and the projects you've already got underway?
I, I will address that unless the City Manager wants to step in. But the staffing issue is something that we do monitor, we work on. We are constantly looking at the different positions and where we have the greatest need. We are looking at other options to augment property management services. We have used grant funding to bring in some case managers to provide some additional assistance.
When you say that, I want to just stop you for a second. Are you talking then about potentially contracting out some of your management services? What are you, what are you thinking of when you say that?
That is a possibility, but you know, it's, it's, those are union positions. So any, you know, any type of discussions about whether or not we contract that out becomes a union issue.
Okay.
But, but there may be options with, depending on how you structure projects. So, you know, this may be an option where doing a partnership like this downtown property and having a developer partner is, it might be a good way to help provide additional support to the Housing Authority in terms of meeting the goals and the missions of the Housing Authority without creating an additional staffing burden to the Housing Authority.
Well, I hope the, I hope the representation, union representation status wouldn't limit us in looking at additional staff if needed. I, if I understood what you're saying, I would want to be very cautious about it. Certainly, if they're unionized, great, but what we need are, it sounds like, is, is at least, I'd like to understand it maybe during the budget cycle, maybe some discussion of what our staffing needs look like. It's very concerning that that would slow us down, because the need is obviously now. And it'll be here, I'm sure, in two and a half years as well. But how rapidly can we move forward? So that'd be the only. And I wouldn't want to see the union status of those jobs somehow affect whether we would create those jobs. Councilor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had three questions, and Director Rutherford, you probably would be the person to answer. The first question has to do with the selection of a developer. It's only going to be one developer? Will there be opportunities for multiple developers, given the lot and the space and what you're looking to build? I'm thinking specifically like smaller developers who want to have an opportunity to provide support to affordable housing, but then are often priced out with the larger organizations and businesses.
Because we're looking at an entire block and kind of creating a vision for that block in a key area downtown, we're focusing more on just one developer, taking all of it.
Okay, and then a second question, and this is referring to page two under objectives, one, two, three, four, bullet point number five. Specifically, the minimum of 20% of units be affordable. Where does that 20% minimum come from? Like, why not, let's say, 25% or 30%?
So we based that using the single property urban renewal area that we created out on the north campus, where we had 15% of the units affordable. So we based it using that as a metric and kind of what the market would bear with 20% as a target. So, you know, as, as we were going through the negotiations and creating that urban renewal area, there are a lot of factors that weigh into a pro forma, including construction pricing, land value. So many different factors affect whether or not you end up with 20%, 15%, 25%. So we put that in as a target, and that would all be subject to a negotiated development agreement.
Okay, and then my last question is actually the, the last bullet point. On being able to support minority business enterprises and women business enterprise businesses during the development process or post-construction. Those are big words, and I'm just wondering, like, what are you envisioning specifically with that particular bullet point?
So we, we intend to establish percentage targets and also intentional outreach to try to secure women and minority owned businesses to participate as either contractors, subcontractors, or architects, or to be included in the development process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments, any of the other information items? We're glad to see Miguel Chris getting some, some attention. That project is a longstanding one, and it's good to see it continue to move forward. Very excited about it. Okay?
The only other thing that I would like to point out, Mayor, is that we are adding additional funding to the Strategic Project Grant Downtown. That is the grant program that came out of our Downtown Homeless Task Force to provide funding for things like security cameras, lights, trash enclosures. So there has been continued and ongoing demand for funding for those programs. So we are going to move some money to recapitalize that.
And will this meet the level of need you're hearing, or is this?
We, well, we think so, but we, we're, what, September, our, our new fiscal year started July. We've gone through the initial funding pretty quickly. So we, we may be back at some point in the year if demand continues.
What's the biggest item in demand? What are people asking for funds?
We've, we've, it's been a mix. Fencing around trash enclosures or gates to alleys off the alleys, lighting and security cameras. Those have been very popular items.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Then the Urban Renewal Agency Board is adjourned. I'm going to take just a couple of seconds to go make a quick cup of tea, and I'll be right back. They'll start City Council then.
Councilor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Councilor Anderson?
So am I.
Councilor Phillips?
Here.
Councilor Leon?
Right here.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilor Hoy?
Here.
Councilor Nordike?
Here.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Councilor Hoy, additions, deletions, changes, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move, we reorder the agenda to move item five point A directly below item two, public comment.
I'll second that. Do we need a second?
Yes.
There's, and there's a set of steak knives.
Who's the second? Is that?
Stapleton.
Stapleton, okay. And there is a set of steak knives. Did you get it twice now?
That's right.
Excellent. Just stop by the office. Have it wrapped for you. Okay.
We need to vote.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Councilor Nordike?
Hi.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leon?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
All right.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, it's an opportunity for members of the council to comment. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Jared Garson to turn on his camera. He's here with us tonight as my guest. There he is. Jared is a junior at Willamette University, and he is serving as an intern with me this semester. He is studying politics, as did I at Willamette quite a number of years ago, several years before Mr. Garson was born. But I had a quite positive experience in my internship. I'm really excited that Jared decided to do an internship this year. And his project is going to be maximizing the number of safe park sites that we have in the city. Currently, we're funded for 20 sites, and we only have about seven of them in place. And he is going to be working on going to our full funding on those number of sites in addition to other items on dealing with people who are unsheltered. Jared is a resident of Salem. He lives over in West Salem. Sorry that he doesn't need to live here in East Salem, but you know, you got to look somewhere in town. And he is super excited to be involved. He's fluent, a fluent speaker of Spanish and is looking at also helping us possibly with our climate action plan, things related to climate change, and also possibly a project for next year. So I just wanted to introduce him to you all. Thank you, Jared, for being here. I really appreciate it. And you might see him around. Staff certainly will be meeting with Jared, and I look forward to a really productive semester. So thank you.
Great, great. Welcome, welcome aboard, Jared. We're really glad you're here. I also graduated from Willamette, but I think probably before your parents were born, so. Really, really glad you're here. I did mine in English, which was a great preparation for politics, so.
That was my minor, so.
Was that a minor?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, anyone else? Councilor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. You know, I really, this time, I wanted to talk about something else, but the, the last month and a half has compelled me to once again talk about COVID-19. So first, I would like to thank our community for taking COVID-19 seriously. As an emergency room doctor, the last month and a half have been really rough, in and outside of the hospital. We've seen cases increase during that time due to the more contagious Delta variant and the surge that it's led to in our community and across the state. I appreciate Salem Health's regular updates to the community at large. For the past several weeks, Salem Health has reported having between 90 and 111 patients admitted with COVID-19 to our hospital. This afternoon, they reported having 97 patients with COVID-19 currently admitted. For people interested in local data about Salem Health, you can go to their website or you can follow their page on Facebook to see some of their good graphics and, and information. Through a combination of increased vaccinations and the wearing of masks in public, there really is hope that we may have reached the peak of this Delta surge. However, there is urgent need to continue to flatten the curve. Throughout the state, we've averaged at least 1,800 new cases per day for an entire month. That's over 1,800 cases per day for 31 days in a row. The record one day case total per day in the winter surge was 1,900 cases. We've now averaged that or more for an entire month. Now, throughout the pandemic, it's always been true that if you're experiencing serious symptoms or an unstable condition, that you should go to the emergency room. It's difficult to say that we've been at capacity or even overcapacity for much of the past several weeks. But my colleagues in the hospital and I are tired, and we need your help. COVID-19 is a serious illness that can lead to hospitalization and even death. And in large part, this illness is preventable. Vaccines are the best way to prevent serious illness, hospitalization, and death. Vaccines are safe, effective, free, and convenient. Please take advantage of the protection that they provide. Please remember the old adage, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." Please continue to wear masks in public. Working together has been the way that we ended diseases like polio, measles, and smallpox. We can do it again. COVID-19 vaccines can literally save your life and the life of someone that you love. Thank you.
Counselor, if someone wants to get a vaccine, where is the quickest, easiest place to go?
I mean, at this point, they are so widely available. You could pretty much go to your pharmacy, your primary care doctor. Of course, you could check in with Salem Health, and you can also go directly to the Oregon Health Authority and.
This is a real walk-in. It's a real walk-in situation, isn't it? There's no appointments. There's no, this is just, I suddenly get the, the urge to be vaccinated. You can go get a vaccine right then and there. Is that pretty much what's going on out there?
For the most part, that is true. I mean, there are times where we fortunately, we are seeing a near doubling or more of new vaccinations since six weeks ago. So, you know, scheduling ahead of time will guarantee that, but to a large extent, you can just show up.
Okay, that's good. I think that helps people understand that it's not aligned at the fairgrounds anymore.
That's correct, but they were available during the state fair.
Well, that's over, so. What do you next? Okay, very good. Thank you, Doctor. That's, that's really helpful. Did you have anything else? Did you have anything else, Trevor, that you want?
No, I mean, like, it was a good last week and a half. I got to attend my first blood drive since the pandemic over at the Salem Elks Lodge off Turner Road, and I got to see my friend Larry McCool and Caesar the No Drama Llama. And then I made a couple Neighborhood Association meetings, but no, that's it for the most part. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a few updates from me, and thank you as always, Counselor Phillips, for sharing your insight and expertise with us. It's, it's so appreciated. A few things that have been going on. I recently attended the support event that the Recovery Outreach Community Center did at Marion Square Park last Friday. Suicide Prevention Week was last week, and on Friday, Rock, or Recovery Outreach Community Center, hosted a terrific event at Marion Square Park. This is an opportunity to celebrate people who are in recovery. Recovery from addiction, people who are overcoming mental health challenges. And I was able to meet with a number of individuals there who are in recovery. One gentleman I talked to told me he is in recovery from being in meth. He took meth for about 30 years and now gives back to the community and is one of those persons who uses his lived experience to reach folks who used to be like him. Who, and so that is one of the ways that we can reach peoples by using our different lived experiences. I met another gentleman who talked at length about his struggles with criminal justice system and addiction, and it was really through finding his own support network that he was able to overcome that. What a lot of people often overlook in recovery is that there's a lot of shame and stigma that comes with even seeking help of any kind. And it's much more prevalent than people would often like to let on. And it's also, in fact, a very much a dirty little secret in a lot of the professions. So I encourage you, if you know someone who is in recovery, to send them a note of gratitude, because it takes a tremendous amount of effort for the human spirit to lift itself out of those conditions. And if you're interested in learning more about Rock and their free online peer-led support groups, they are free to everyone. About 40% of their clientele are persons experiencing homelessness in the area. You can find them on Facebook and online. They also do a support group for the Saniam Canyon wildfire survivors. Speaking of the wildfire survivors, through a lot of the different hats that I wear, one of them has been volunteering in the canyon. And we still have over 800 individuals who are still living in hotels from the Saniam Canyon wildfires and other wildfires around the state from last year. So while the, those particular wildfires may have faded from the headlines, those individuals are still very much in need. And if you have any time, talent, or treasure to support those groups, you can find them by supporting United Way and their efforts and the variety of other community and state and county level partners who are all doing their part. So I really appreciate that. I think that it's important to show what people are doing around us. Tomorrow night, I'm going to be visiting the Capital Football Club. They are breaking ground on a brand new building. They want to create a pioneer sports complex out on Corden Road. The Capital Football Club provides all kinds of soccer teams and clinics and opportunities for kids of all ages. You know, especially kids from at-risk backgrounds, uh, low-income backgrounds, English language learner backgrounds, refugee children. This is a way for people to get together and play a team sport. And there's a lot of data that shows the mental health benefits of team sports and how it teaches kids a lot of life skills they need, how to play fair, how to follow the rules, how to work as a team, how to handle losing gracefully, how to be a good winner. All of those things. It's great for girls and boys. As I said, it's a wonderful opportunity. And the CFC has told me that a lot of their clinics and their clubs and opportunities to even join their soccer clubs are at capacity. So they are in desperate need of building more territory and having a whole sports complex, better parking, permanent restrooms, all those things. Um, I'm just excited to see team sports as a way to help keep kids in school. It helps them keep their academic records up. It builds self-esteem. There's no downside that I can see to this, folks. So, um, those are just some of the things that are going on in our community. Last but not least, I would be remiss if I did not mention the fact that there has a fire at the outskirts of my ward in southwest Salem today. We will be hearing from our chief of our fire department, Chief Niblock, tonight. Last I heard, no one had gotten hurt, thank goodness, but I will be anxiously waiting to hear from the chief if there are any updates on that. But this is a good reminder, folks. Make sure you sign up for our emergency alert system. Everyone thinks it could never happen here, but after ice storms, heat waves, wildfires, smoke, all these pandemic, please, by all means, sign up for our alert system to get a free text, a free phone call, an email, or all three. And the city of Salem is also putting on free emergency preparedness clinics with our own emergency manager, Greg Walsh. Please take advantage of these opportunities to protect you and your loved ones when the next, God forbid, disaster happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I wanted to second your reaction to the ROK event down at Marion Square Park. I was invited to kick that off. And it was really a great event, a real opportunity to talk with a lot of people who are actually involved in the direct action with folks in recovery, folks who need to get into recovery, folks who are homeless. It was really an excellent, excellent event. It's really the hands, uh, it was the hands across the bridges, but they weren't able to put it together because of COVID this year to take their hands across the bridge. We're hopeful they'll do it, do it that way next year. So it was, uh, really was an outstanding event. Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start today's comments with, again, reading of the land, land, um, land acknowledgement followed by five specific announcements. So we're gathered here on the land of the Kalapuya, who today are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Round and the Confederate tribes of Salits Indians, whose relationship with this land continues to this day. We offer gratitude for the land itself, for those who have stewarded it for generations, and for the opportunity to study, learn, work and be in the community on this land. We acknowledge that our city's history, like many others, is fundamentally tied to the first colonial developments in the Willamette Valley. Finally, we respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present and future indigenous communities who live in and around Salem. I strongly urge City of Salem and other residents to do more than just a land acknowledgement. Consider learning more about the land that we reside on and recognizing the work and activities of our indigenous peoples. Last week, Salem Kaiser School District resumed 100% in-person school followed, following COVID-19 healthy and safety protocols. Today, kindergarteners started. I want to say a big kudos and hurrah to our Salem Kaiser families who are starting school, whether they're in person, still continuing to, um, study virtually through the Edge platform or through other methods for education. My organization, my nonprofit, my Kinesian Honor Community is doing a cultural celebration this Saturday, September 18th, starting at 1:30 PM at Riverfront Park at the amphitheater, the old amphitheater. The rotary one is not open yet. Won't be open until after October 1st. Masks and social distancing will be observed. Our event MIC Celebration has been an ongoing event for several years in the City of Salem to showcase our culture and our community. Last year, we went 100% virtual. This year, we're going to be in person following public health and safety COVID-19 protocols to keep our community and attendees safe. COVID-19 vaccines will be available as well as food boxes and there's a lot of cultural performance and celebrations will be taking place. I hope, I invite many of you to join us. I also want to say a special kudos to Gretchen Bennett, um, one of our wonderful City of Salem staff, who's been a valuable resource, not only to me as a city counselor, but also to my work in my nonprofit. No amount of thank yous can be expressed for the amount of work and support that she has done, especially for our BIPOC communities and for unsheltered residents. I also wanted to, um, let my Ward Four residents know that I've heard from many of you who've contacted me regarding, um, your concerns about noise, excessive noise and lights that's happening at the new Costco build that's happening between the hours of 12 AM to 7 AM. I learned from city staff that there was a special permit provided that allows them to work between those hours, partially because of, um, some of the pouring of concrete, which you only could do outside of, um, the, the summer heat. So I've been hearing, um, from a lot of people who had concerns about that, especially people who need to work and who are being woken up in the middle of the night. And I was happy to hear that the city staff had reduced the work hours between, uh, I don't know the exact work hours, but reduce the hours for the contractors, recognizing there has to be considerations when a commercial space is being built next door to residents. I also urge my residents in Ward Four to continue to speak to me if you continue experiencing issues. And I also ask my fellow city counselors to consider the impact building commercial property next to residential sites may have, especially if there is work done outside of the traditional work hours, you know, the impact that it has not only on people who work, um, during the day, but also even on families with young children. Um, last, I really want to strongly urge people to apply and run for boards and commissions. Um, as you see in today's agenda, we have quite a bit of people who are being appointed onto boards and commissions tonight. And I strongly urge people to go and search on the City of Salem Boards and Commissions. And there's a lot of openings, open seats still available. Um, when, before I was, um, ran and won for city council, um, I was a commission on the Human Rights Commission. And while I was interested in the Library Advisory Board, there were time constraints that made it difficult for me to participate in. But I strongly urge other folks to look into that, especially if you want to have a, a voice and opportunity to participate in any city business. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to kind of go back to what Counselor Phillips was talking about, and he was talking about a killer in our community. And there are things that the individuals in the community can do to stop this. And he was quite eloquent in a plea for that. There's also another killer in our community that, um, fortunately, I haven't had to speak at the city council meetings lately, but we had another pedestrian being killed by a driver of a car. And this happened to a woman named Alita Pierre Kelly, who was hit at the intersection of 25th and Mission, which is a problematic intersection. And I've spoken with Chief Womack and this apparently, uh, and it sounded like from the description, was not the driver's fault particularly. In other words, the pedestrian might have been, uh, Ms. Pierre Kelly might have been crossing against a light or something else. But, um, it points out the fact that we all need to be, uh, very, very cognizant of our surroundings when we're driving. And be careful. And it also points out to me that what I've said a lot, um, you know, in the 20 or so deaths I've talked about, that some of it is a, a, a design problem and that intersection is extremely wide. And I know there's some concept, uh, in fact, it is, uh, by the city's account, is in the top 10% of safety problem intersections statewide here in our city. So anything that we do to make it wider is just going to make things worse. So I would urge the Public Works Department to look at that and see that there may be, there's some sort of islands we can put in or something else we can do to make that intersection, take it out of the top 10%. So, uh, folks out there, both walking and driving, just be careful of your surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Zamanum Joseda. You know, I always introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight our city's long-time diversity. And once again, today I use Pashto, one of Afghanistan's main languages. And it's primarily to keep the lives of the Afghan people, especially the women, top of mind. Um, on a brighter note, Ward Five thanks the thousands of visitors to the Oregon State Fair. You know, I hadn't missed one for 40 years until last year. And even though the first couple of days, the attendance was light, last weekend was, um, one of the busiest I had ever seen. And last, I just wanted to share the concerns of many of my neighbors. You know, the cleanup of the encampment at the Marcus Street Bridge is done. But many people, uh, didn't leave, you know, and they just sort of scattered. And we, and, well, they need help too. Now there are mini encampments along the sides of the I-5 Bridge and also along Fisher Road, um, near Sunnyview and Silverton Road. Actually, this morning, a small business owner reached out to me to let me know he has daily difficult interactions with people, uh, making it really unsafe for, um, many of his staff. You know, he reached out to ODOT about a month ago, no action yet. And he's scared because it's getting worse, um, by the day. So I'll be reaching out to some of the appropriate city staff and keep you all posted. Thank you. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one quick item I forgot to mention earlier. And that's that I read in the Statesman Journal today and I encourage you all to take a look at the article. A gentleman who walked on every street in the city of Salem over the past, I think it was 18 months, Ed Lazara. And as you read clear out at the end of the article, he says he hopes the city council will notice and add more sidewalks. And I just wanted to make, mention that I saw that. And I wanted to assure Mr. Lazara that we work very hard to add more sidewalks and every counselor makes that a priority in their ward. And it is such a high dollar, uh, amount that right now it's very slow with no, with no current, uh, bond or levy out there. We don't exactly have money to do that. And so I didn't, I wanted to acknowledge that we see that and we know that even before that article, we work on that. But, um, it is an issue that we all, we all see and we're all working to address. So thank you. And I'm, I'm pretty impressed that he walked on all the streets. I'm sorry that I didn't see him when he was over here in East Salem, but I think that's a pretty cool, uh, thing to do. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did that? Counselor, I was trying to remember. I read that article. I thought that was remarkable. I really, an interesting thing to do, particularly for those of us who run for public office. We know that walking and what that's like in small bits.
Yes, we do.
How many, how many, uh, miles of sidewalk did it say? Didn't it say we have like over 900 miles of sidewalks in this?
I, I'm not, I don't recall the number of sidewalks. I think he said it was 1,600 miles of walking. Uh, but I don't recall, it might've been 900 and some miles of sidewalks.
Yeah, it surprised me how many miles there are. Uh, yeah, well, hopefully we can up the number. Anyone else? All right, we'll move then. Oops, I'm sorry. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. Um, just really quick, I wanted to, um, thank everybody for bringing up all these really great, um, different points. There's so much going on in our community. Um, but it's great to come here and learn about all the different things happening across the city. Um, but I just wanted to take a minute and thanks, um, city staff. Um, I know that it's, it's been a hard go lately and, um, I get the chance to run into city staff um, on my walks, um, or just visiting, uh, down at City Hall. And, um, I wanted to reach out today and just really highlight all the hard work you guys are doing. It does not go unseen. I know all of us counselors really appreciate you and are, uh, just honored, um, to be a part of this team that we call City of Salem. And, uh, just personally thank the folks that have been working on the, the roads here in my neighborhood. Um, it's just always so great to see you all out there and, uh, just thanks for all your hard work. And, um, last thing, I did want to bring up another, um, great event that I went to, uh, between, uh, this last month. And it's called Cultivating Change and it's this wonderful, um, group that is working with LGBTQIA+ community and, uh, helping get folks interested in, uh, the industries of agriculture, forestry and natural resources. And it's just, it was a really great time to be together and be in such a positive atmosphere and, uh, working to change, uh, some long traditions, um, that haven't been necessarily welcoming for those folks, um, and change that to be, um, a much brighter future for them. And, uh, so it was really great to go and be there with all of them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, great. Well, thank you. That was, uh, all real interesting. One of the opportunities I had was to participate in a, uh, 9/11 celebration on Saturday. And, uh, I want, it gives me a chance to, uh, share with you proclamation. Whereas September 11th, 2001, 20 years ago, marks a somber day in the United States history. And whereas we remember the nearly 3,000 people who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001 in New York City, Pennsylvania and the Pentagon. And whereas the grief and devastation caused by this national tragedy was met with heroism, compassion and union of the American people. And whereas we honor the valor and fearlessness of hundreds of firefighters, police officers and first responders, as well as ordinary people whose instinct was to run toward untold danger to help those in need. And whereas the sacrifices made by people on that horrific day remain etched in our minds forever. And whereas we remain a hopeful country inspired by the kindness and compassion of those who live here and our commitment to freedom and opportunity, now therefore I check Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim September 11th, 2021 is 9/11 Day of Remembrance and encourage the community to reflect on the terrible events of September 11th, 2001. Honor those whose lives were lost as well as the heroism of the first responders and consider making September 11th a day of service in honor of those sacrifices dated this 11th day of September, 2021. And then, uh, I had a second proclamation. It's one we do annually. Whereas the Constitution of the United States embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas we celebrate the 234th anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution on September 17th, 2021. And whereas we recognize the 65th anniversary of Constitution Week as issued by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on August 19th, 1955 and signed into public law 915 on August 2nd, 1956. And whereas our constitution established six basic governing principles for society. These include popular sovereignty, the rule of law, federalism, judicial review, individual rights and separation of powers through a system of checks and balances. And whereas our federal system has welcomed generations of immigrants from every part of the globe to participate in the freedom, opportunity and rule of law our constitution affords, creating out of many groups, one indivisible, indivisible nation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, now therefore I check Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2021 is Constitution Week and encourage the community to reaffirm the ideals of the constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to all of us through this enduring document. And then I'd like to, uh, move to, I've just taken a second here, I'm sorry. Public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Don't see anyone jumping on here. Okay, then we're going to move to 5A, which, uh, I'd like to invite the folks from Portland General Electric to, uh, to join us. Particularly, I want to, uh, recognize Maria Pope, I believe, the CEO and president of PGE as well as Director of Wildfire Mitigation and Resiliency, Bill Messner, Senior Director of Transmission and Distribution Operations, Tom Yost, and our Local Government Affairs Manager and friend Wendy Belles. So, welcome to all of you. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wendy, are you first?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start us off here and hopefully I, um, I got to. I really appreciate the staff walking, um, walking through it earlier. Oh, there we go. Well, good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of city council, Steve and city staff. Um, thank you for making time on your busy agenda for us tonight. I'm Wendy Valis, your Local Government Affairs Manager at PGE and it's really an honor with all of you this evening. Um, before we get started, I wanted to first thank you, particularly. Um, before we get started, I wanted to first thank you, particularly city staff for your support during the historic and your leaders. Uh, during the historic ice storm that occurred earlier this year in February. Your partnership during the storm and the recovery effort is greatly appreciated. Um, as Mayor Bennett mentioned, joining me this evening is PGE's President and CEO Maria Pope. Um, our Director of Wildfire Mitigation and Resiliency, Bill Messner. And Senior Director of Transmission and Distribution Operations, Tom Yost. Uh, this is incredible, but we were last together in December of two thousand nineteen. And unaware, when we came and presented to you about some of the things we were doing at PGE for resi- on resiliency. We were unaware of the historic event uh uh events that were going to occur in a few short months in twenty twenty and into twenty twenty-one with the pandemic, the wildfires and the storm. Given all that, that is past. We thought it would be helpful to provide an update. Um, Maria, Bill and Tom will share updates with you on the restoration work that we undercut, took following the February ice storm. And we'll talk a little bit, they'll talk a little bit about what we're doing to enhance resiliency for Salem and your residents. And discuss our overall strategy around resiliency and emergency preparedness. Which um I loved hearing many of the counselors touching on some of the things that we're going to be sharing this evening. So that was, that was really great. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to President and CEO Maria Pope to talk a little bit about our community involvement in Salem and some of our shared goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, uh, thank you very much. And Mayor Bennett, it's an honor to be here. Uh, council members, uh, we very much appreciate all of your time and your interest. Um, as Wendy mentioned, I don't think uh I need to tell you that the twelve, past twelve months have been historic. Uh, clearly, just about two years ago, when we were in front of you talking about resiliency um and reliability, we had no idea what we'd be facing in our future. Um, and if we look back um into February, we experienced uh a forty-year ice event uh that did dam- devastating damage uh throughout your area, as well as many other customers uh across the region. Uh, it was the, it was the largest uh amount of damage to our distribution system that we had ever withstood. And we had um over seven hundred and fifty thousand distinct customer outages. And more than half of our customers lost power. Uh, ninety thousand people within Salem were hit hard and were out of power. Um, and I know uh I know that um this time was very difficult for customers. Uh, but I also want to thank the Salem community for your understanding. Uh, and while we worked to safely restore power during the February ice storm. Um, you know, it was, it was a very challenging period of time, and we thank you very much for the partnership. Uh, last year in the fall, um, our region experienced the devastating wildfires, which were a direct uh result of our changing uh weather patterns and probably climate change. Um, and of course, uh, as has been talked about today, uh, we continue to suffer through the pandemic. Um, and it's created additional stresses on many of our customers, cities and communities, making resiliency all the more important today because we know that people are relying on electricity for their work, for how they go to school, for interconnection with family and one another. And this event here, just this evening and the meeting today. Um, you also want you to recognize that as we work through our reliability, resiliency and really strengthening our grid. We continue to be focused on making sure that we're reducing the amount of carbon through our, of our energy supply. We're expanding electrification, particularly in the transportation area, which accounts for forty percent of Oregon's greenhouse gas emissions. And we're working, and and I would really credit Tom to his leadership to really serve customers better day in and day out, uh using technology. Uh, whether that is to restore power faster, to get new customers hooked up faster. But also to connect customers uh with digital uh text messages and other information on outages or other important um things going on. Uh, we very much have a goal of reducing um our admissions uh by eighty percent by twenty thirty and then net zero by twenty forty. Um, and my commitment to you is we transform our company to meet these aggressive goals is that we will maintain and enhance our reliability, resiliency and be on the forefront. And we also know how important affordability is. Uh, we're going to spend some more time and Bill and Tom will both talk in depth about the ice storm events and wildfires. And please know that we have already made numerous changes after the wildfires that helped us through the ice storms and after the ice storms that helped us through the high heat dome events. They particularly were hard hit in Portland, but you also saw it in Salem. Um, and we continue to work hard. So as we go to the next slide, I really want to thank you for the strong partnership that we've had. And I will tell you, if the last twelve months have taught us anything, it's taught us to be agile, to be prepared, to be humble and to recognize that none of us do anything important alone. And that we have to rely on partnerships like those between PGE and the City of Salem. Um, and I would like to also take a moment to thank you and your staff for the collaboration uh and the communication during the February storms and during the last fall's Beechey Creek Fire. It was invaluable for us to be able to have personal and direct communication with your leadership team between our staff, your organization's first responders. Um, and I'm proud that we have been partners and have been serving you for over a hundred and thirty years. We're excited about some of the fun collaborations we have around the uh Salem Electric Avenue this past year. And Ken Spencer, who's of one of our persons, our organization. Um, he uh has been working very closely uh with city staff and is an engineer assigned to your area. And then, of course, our very own Wendy Belize, who's uh participated in the development of the city's climate action plan. Um, I truly believe that we have a lot in common. Um, and it starts with being an essential service provider. It starts as being here uh for the long term, for our customers, for all community members, for producing safe, reliable, affordable power, to ensuring resiliency of our system, to preparing for uh the dark, um, you know, sort of difficult periods of our time. But also here on blue sky days as well, driving our operations to be more effective, more efficient and better partners with you. So with that, please let me turn it over to Tom, uh, who will start talking about what happened at the forty-year ice event. Tom?
Yes, thanks, Maria. Appreciate the opportunity. And Mayor, city councilors, thank you very much for time this evening to talk about the ice events and our resiliency efforts here at the company. And you know, it has been a challenging year. I think as Maria mentioned, you know, we had the Labor Day uh firestorm just over a year ago. And then, of course, just a few months later, we were hit with the February uh forty-year ice event. Probably one of the worst storms that I've ever been uh part of in my career uh in the utility industry. So uh and then just a few months ago, we had the uh the heat dome, you know, the hundred and sixteen, hundred and seventeen degrees that we had in the, in the Portland area. So it's been a challenging year. And then, of course, couple that with COVID. And wow, it's been a, a, you know, a really a tremendous year. But um, let's, let's talk a little bit about the ice event that we got hit with just uh in February. This is a very unique uh storm that came in. It was really three separate storms that hit us. It started uh the evening of February tenth, Wednesday. That was our first wave. And then it continued uh really through Sunday, February fourteenth, and three separate storms that hit. And as Maria mentioned, we restored, you know, nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand customers in that storm. Uh, and just tremendous. That's three quarters of our customer base, a little bit over actually. And uh some of those customers were hit multiple times because the storm would come in in the first wave. And uh we'd get them restored. Then the second wave would hit and just a mile down the road, another tree would go through a line, get them restored and and some even were hit as many as three times, just, just by the nature of that event that hit us. But with that, a lot of resiliency efforts that we've gone through with the company. And I love those pictures in this slide, that upper left-hand corner. As you can see, that's just a cylinder of ice uh encasing one of our overhead lines. I mean, just, it's crazy amount of weight that that's putting on that particular line. I believe it's an apple pole and that was, you know, it was laying in the road there. And then you look at that uh right below that, you know, a tree that was hit with some major damage from the ice limbs. You know, major limbs down in that yard. And that's the kind of thing that we were contending with, with that storm. We either had whole trees go down through our lines or major limbs that went down through those lines. So in the city of Salem alone, you know, we uh roughly ninety thousand total customer outages that we restored. We had really good coordination with the Marion County Emergency Management. Thank you. Uh, was really a big part of that. And uh the, the lower uh, in the lower left-hand corner, that's one of my favorite pictures from the storm. And that's how we responded. That's uh Chamekada Community College, the parking lot. And we staged, oh gosh, I'm thinking forty to fifty outside crews, uh outside of PGE. We actually brought in two hundred and seventy outside crews uh to, to help us with the storm as far uh east as Utah, from Canada even down to California. So two hundred and seventy line crews. Just probably the most in the history of the company that we ever brought in from the outside. Then in addition to that, we had a hundred and fifty uh tree crews that came in from all parts of the country to help us with that. As, as you can imagine that, you know, that middle picture there, we just had limbs and trees all over the place that we had to deal with. So in fact, we're still dealing with some of the cleanup efforts from the ice storm. And even the Labor Day firestorm that, you know, we all uh had a part of. Of course, Beechey Creek was a big part of that. So just, just a crazy amount of dam, just, just real quick, I'll go through. We replaced over eleven hundred poles. That's, that's a lot of poles. And that was in a three-week timeframe. We put up a hundred and eighty miles of wire. That's basically a line from Portland to Ben. Uh, just under four thousand crossarms, uh twelve hundred transformers. So just a crazy amount of materials that we went through with that storm. And it, it just, it really went off very, without a hitch. I mean, very proud of the team, the PGE team. It was an all hands on deck uh type of restoration effort from uh Wendy, you know, the, the governmental affairs side to our operations side, to build side, and it just uh everywhere that we could get help, uh we were able to get it. So um, just, just one of those storms that uh, you, you know, it, it hit us and you're happy that it's gone.
And I, you know, I'd like to just really thank um you all without being able to have people at Chamekada College, particularly during the pandemic, we could not have placed enough line workers and tree trimming crews uh to help us with the restoration. So the partnership with all of you and Chakam- Chakamaka Community College was absolutely invaluable. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Maria. Thank you for that. It really was. In fact, it was, it went so well. They went from Chamekada Community College to our Salem Line Center. It was just a smooth flowing operation, almost like an assembly line of, of uh, we bring them the food. They go to the Salem Line Center, get, get the job packets, get the materials and head on up in the field. So really great effort there. Uh, this slide talks a little bit about our resiliency efforts uh since the Labor Day firestorm. And of course, with the ice storm that we had in February. So today we're building a more smarter, more robust grid uh throughout the company. We're transitioning from wood poles to ductile iron uh poles. They're much, much stronger. They avoid rot. Uh, they don't start on fire, really get some really uh big benefits there. Also transitioning from wood crossarms to fiberglass tr- crossarms. Uh, tree wire, which you'll see a picture in the next slide of what tree wire looks like. Uh, more smart monitoring on our system. Uh, we also are employing electronic uh fuses. They're called trip savers. Uh, you know, throughout the system. In fact, we've got uh roughly uh just numbers, we've installed just a hundred and twenty-five, uh just over a hundred and twenty-five trip savers, just in the Salem area alone. And again, that's an electronic fuse. So some pretty uh cool uh technology stuff there. Our tree trimming efforts, uh we've got a very robust tree trimming program. We will trim roughly forty-one hundred miles this year alone. Uh, with that, we have another, a second program in that we call it the Advanced Wildfire Risk Reduction, which Bill's going to talk about just a little bit here uh coming up. And we are getting into our high-risk fire areas. We're doing annual inspections in those areas. We're removing hazard trees. Those are trees that, you know, are basically within one year could fall into our lines and create an outage. We're trying to get rid of those. And we also have some other tree trimming efforts in there. And also our fitness program, which is really our inspection program. We go out and inspect poles on a, on a, in, in our high fiber zones on an annual basis. Uh, the crossarms, all the associated equipment. In fact, uh in two thousand twenty-one, we will replace roughly three thousand poles in, in two thousand twenty-one. That's a large amount of poles for any utility company. So really proud of that effort that we've taken down. Of course, the Salem area improvements, you know, the Salem areas uh uh has a robust growth with, with new subdivisions. Uh, our continuing underground cable replacement program that we are working. And of course, some of the city uh road uh improvements that we're working with, the Reed Road Transmission Line uh relocation, just in the design uh phase right now, and also the Hayesville Pump Station. And our next slide here is just some pictures of equipment that uh are hardening our system, adding to the resiliency of our system. I'll just start in the upper left-hand corner there. That's one of our remote uh weather monitoring stations. Of course, uh wind speed, temperature, humidity, et cetera. Uh, we've got them placed throughout the system. Bill probably knows the numbers off the top of his head. I'll let Bill talk about that one. But we have access to that. So if we have certain areas that are, you know, very high risk due to weather conditions, we can uh pull those up and see what the exact uh uh weather conditions are in those particular areas. The next picture to the right of that is one of those electronic uh, or actually, no, that's an ELF fuse, an L E L F. And that stands for Energy Limiting Fuse. And what that fuse does, so when that fuse operates, instead of blowing a uh uh hot uh mass out of it, so to speak, it's actually, it does not do that. So will not start a fire uh when it operates, actually. So that's a new, that's new industry technology out there. So that fuse operates again, it's limits the energy, so it will not start a fire for anything that's around it, basically. Uh, just to the right of that is one of our Tesla battery storage installations, a very cool project that we're embarking in. And to the right of that is what we call a Viper re-closer. That is a, what we call a SCADA operated device. And that is something that our uh Energy Control Center up in Phoenix can operate remotely. We've got roughly thirty of those in the Salem area, so they can operate them remotely from uh, from the Portland uh Ops Center. So some really cool stuff there. Uh, bottom left there is a picture of what we are, uh, part of that um vegetation management program that we have. That's our advanced uh wildfire vegetation management. And that's a LiDAR picture. And LiDAR is really more like a radar. And so you can see those, uh, you can see the picture of the lines there, and then, of course, the trees. The ones with the red ovals, those are trees that are outside the uh line right away. But if they fail, they have an opportunity to fall in our lines, basically. So some of those are a hundred and fifty foot, up to two, two hundred foot trees. And again, they'll be outside the right away, but they can, of course, if they fail, it will fall in into our lines and create an outage there, basically. Uh, the net, the picture to the right there is what I call, we call tree wire. That's an insulated wire on top of the pole there, and it's in a triangular configuration. So it really limits to when a tree or a limb goes down. Hopefully it'll, it'll hit that line and pretty much just bounce off it versus the picture to the far right is kind of a traditional setup. And that's actually one of those ductile iron poles and a fiberglass crossarm. Uh, a limb can almost just lay on top of that. So we're trying to do a lot of work in the near future with tree wire. Uh, and of course, with those ductile iron poles. And then that uh picture, that blue piece of equipment there, that's one of our uh smart feeder relays that we're employing throughout the system. So a lot of really uh neat, high-technology stuff uh on the utility side that we're going forward with and uh something that we're really pleased with. And with that, I thank you, and we're going to transition to Bill.
Yes, thank you, Tom. And, and as Tom stated to you, it's very much a pleasure to be here today. So thank you so much. I'm going to go through this slide here, and um there's some slides in the appendix. So if there's some questions, I can refer to the appendix later on. But not only are we preparing for pandemics, storms and wildfires, as we've already just talked about, we also have to think of broader than that as a company. And so we have cyber and physical threats, Cascadia earthquakes and regional. And let me just go through a little bit of these, and, and I'll dive in a little bit in particular, just because of referencing some of the slides that uh Tom just mentioned. So in the, in the wa- wildfire space, there is an area that we're working on is situational awareness. And that's those weather stations that Tom talked about. We're putting twenty-plus in, in, in those in our system. The reason being is we have to understand the weather at a micro level, not at a macro level. And so it will inform our decision-making processes as we try to manage, or we actively shut off the grid like we did in Mount Hood um last year. From a, from a cyber and physical, uh physical um threat, we have bad actors out there. Um, and this is quite evident from the pipeline that was attacked on the uh East Coast. And so we are very much heavily investing in this space from a cyber standpoint. We test our employees on a regular basis with phishing emails to make sure, because they're our first line of defense. We also have heavily invested in our physical security with a, an elaborate badging and camera system that we have, we have just recently uh put in place. The Cascadia event is not something that we take lightly. It's something we think that will happen. We don't think about if, we think about when. And so we're planning for that as well. And some of the comments earlier today's meeting about being prepared, being resilient is what we strive for our own employees, because we have to be prepared so we can respond to serve you, our community. The regional emergency aspect there, the last slide there on on the right, is really that we are part of a eleven Western United States and parts of Canada grids. We're not like Texas, we're not on an island by ourselves. We manage that grid from that perspective and it allows us to be have a lot more flexibility. But with that, we also have to think of the risks that could happen with that as well. So we have plans around that as well. Now I will just really briefly talk about the chevrons on the on the bottom there. So emergency planning and exercises. So we're a NIMS company, a National Incident Management System company. It's the same thing that your fire department is part of. We have incident commanders, PIOs, Public Information Officers. So we have everybody in those positions. So when an event does happen, we are talking the same language and communicating well and effectively with those that we serve. We have exercises, we have plans, we plan, do and check. So we write our plans, we test those plans, we check those plans and then we rinse, recycle and repeat and make them better every year. System improvements, seismic investments we have done throughout our our service territory and our hydro projects. Redundant systems, one of the things that we're investing in right now that will open up later this year is our Integrated Operations Center. That building is designed to withstand a Cascadia type event, a large earthquake. And so we have the ability to to respond to that event very quickly. It is actually built on a moving foundation. And so we and we have the ability to keep the grid running from there and it houses our key operations. We'll have really good nerve center to respond. Another neat thing about that construction is that we've actually designed it. So we have trailer hookups. So FEMA needs to come in here and help establish recovery. They have the ability to hook up their trailer to to electricity and sanitation so we can keep going and respond quickly. And then lastly, I just want to talk about strategic partnerships. And this is exactly one of those examples. Having these these communications today in a time of non emergency is really good. Maria always talks about, hey, we want to develop relationships now, not in a time of emergency. And so we have those types of relationships and we want to continue this partnership after the fact. When Wendy and I met or when we all met in two thousand nineteen, we actually had a plan to actually do a tabletop exercise together with the city and and the pandemic got in the way of that. So we definitely want to have those conversations get started again. We're part of EEI, we're part of W I, W I is Western Energy Institute, E I is Electric and Electric and Edison Institute. These are consortiums where we share information and we learn at a at a high pace, not in a want to learn exponentially so we can always get better. And we're also part of an international wildfire consortium where we're learning about wildfires across the globe and how we can get better practices into our region very quickly and not have to wait. We want to learn from others. And with that, I will turn that over back to Maria. And I think we have one more slide and I think we're ready for questions. Maria? You're on mute, Maria.
There's, I want to make sure that we spend some time. In July, we filed a rate case. And just for those of you who aren't familiar with how regulated utilities are compensated for the work that we do, we're regulated by the Oregon Public Utility Commission. And periodically, we file what's called a general rate case to reflect the cost increases that we've had in the systems or the investments that we've made. Our last rate case was three years ago, which is unusual. Normally, we wouldn't wait so long, but given the pandemic, we wanted to be sensitive to all of our customers, but particularly those hardest hurt during the pandemic. And so we held off on filing a rate case. We are seeking three point nine percent average price increases. And this is to reflect all of the investment that you've heard in the system, all of the growth in terms of new neighborhoods and others. Yes, those that means that people are using electricity, but they tend to use electricity over a long period of time and the investment is frequently upfront. And as a cost based system, the Oregon Public Utility Commission will take a look at all of our investments, all of our costs, and then determine the prudency of our rate cases. So it's about a ten month process. Rates would go into effect sometime in May or thereabouts. And sometimes you'll hear aspects of this in the public press and whatnot. But with that, let me open it up to questions of of any shape or sort. We're really pleased to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There we go, I can now see.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
There, thank you. Counselor Nordahl.
Thank you. I don't have a question at this moment. I'm still processing the great amount of information you just gave us, which I appreciate. But I do want to express gratitude to Ms. Belize because during the ice storms, Ms. Belize was pulled in all directions. But she made herself available to me and a lot of the vulnerable residents in my neck of the woods who were desperate for any news. And as as you all know, some people are very tech savvy. They know how to go to the PG website and report updates. Not everybody knows how to do that. Not everyone speaks English and for a variety of reasons, you know. I really urge PGE, keep doing what you can to push an equitable level of outreach to our non English speakers, people who are not as tech savvy. But so that's the comment for next time, which I know you're getting lessons learned from this ice storm. But I also do really want to praise Wendy for being available for just a gazillion different questions I had and a lot of the the low income seniors that are in my area in the senior facilities. I appreciate a number of those folks from what I heard directly from Wendy were being prioritized and getting service restored. I was without power for two weeks and I was just fine because I I can live, I can manage. I had a generator, I had an instant pot and one lantern and one lamp that I could keep lit for that entire time. I just appreciate the fact that you have to triage during these emergencies. So thank you and please continue doing what you can to push equity in emergency response. Thank you.
The Counselor Nordahl, thank you very much. And let me tell you, Wendy is a tireless advocate for all of our customers and particularly for those who are Spanish speakers. She's also now become a radio and television personality as well. But please know that when Wendy speaks to you, that information gets directly to Tom. You know, some people think of us as a large company, but we all work together. And Tom runs all of the linemen who are doing all of the work through the storms and whatnot. And and I mean, he was working eighteen hours a day triaging. I would say that what we really learned was, well, the magnitude of Mother Nature, absolutely. That is, there's no question about that. But I think we we operated better than we communicated. And we're now developing systems and processes to improve all of our communications. And we're very good at at prioritizing hospitals and other certain critical facilities. But elder care facilities were not ones that we were as astute with in terms of prioritizing. And sometimes they'd come, they they developed and we didn't necessarily know what they were and they would show as one meter. And so that aspect, we've had a lot of lessons learned. So thank you very much and we're all grateful to be able to work with Wendy. Also, I would also tell you Wendy did not have any power during any of this period of time. So it was not uncommon that she would be working from her car or from the Woodburn City Hall or other places. So Wendy was also, as well as many others, were also out of power at our company. Thank you.
Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of things I want to talk about. I think this first one is for you, Tom. And our tree canopy here in Salem is, I think in our last report, only two percent of it is in excellent health. And of course, as we face climate change, we know that tree canopy is going to be vital to just keeping our city cool. And of course, with all those single occupancy cars and getting that fresh air all cycled through. So our trees kind of get a beating when it comes to power lines. Power lines take precedent over trees. And we see that in the way that they're trimmed and in the way that growth regulators are sprayed on them. And I'm wondering, after this whole ice storm, what were the lessons learned and where are we moving towards when getting those power lines underground? So that we can kind of let the trees do the tree thing and we can kind of avoid these nature power interactions that have such negative consequences for our residents here, not only with the ice storm, but also with the fires.
Sure, no great question there. Yeah, the ice storm definitely presented a lot of challenges for us as a utility and of course, probably for the city of Salem as well. So definitely would welcome any partnering opportunities. In fact, we just got completed a series of meetings with the Clackamas County Cities on how we can partner better together, working to for a common goal, basically on whether it be tree trimming, it could be even undergrounding lines, right tree, right place, reviewing tree codes, et cetera. So we'd welcome the opportunities. In fact, we're going to meet with Marion County tomorrow. In fact, Wendy and I and Randy Healy have been talking about starting a series of meetings with the Marion County and Yam Hill County Cities to talk about those partnerships, such as that we've got a very mature vegetation management program, some really great subject matter experts, Alice Kanapka, Zach Bertolak, that do a really good job. They are experts in the field of trees. They can run circles around me definitely in that area. But no, so I I would say let's let's partner together going forward and see what we can do, whether it be trimming, again, right tree, right place, reviewing tree codes, that type of thing. So we can create some real good partnerships there.
I'd also like to add, I think the city of Salem was particularly hard hit by trees because you have you have some beautiful old oak trees and old would be the operative word. And so for many of the power lines actually in the city center itself and proper, and I will tell you those connected with the governor's house as well as some others in the neighborhood, the root systems came completely out of the ground and made it much harder to address some of the Salem restoration because that was all underground. So I I think it's, I think we have to remember that just by putting power lines underground, not only can it be very, very expensive, but it can actually be much harder to restore if there's problems. And that is one of the things that led to the the challenges. And I think we had three or four tree trimming crews just even before the electric workers could get to the underground system to be able to restore power. And the governor's house was also out for over ten days before it was able to be restored. And the underground nature in those old oak trees was part of it. So when we talk about right tree, right place, it's about healthy vibrant trees. And and sometimes that's that's a tough discussion to have. But I I promise you, I think parts of Salem have a new appreciation for the older oak trees that that you all have and the challenges that took place. I would also say that what we're what we're seeing in terms of tree health is that with some of our very hot temperatures, we're seeing higher levels of tree mortality than we than we have ever before. And so there's there's got to be a way that we're dealing with those trees that are that are no longer alive or they're no longer fully alive. They've got bugs or other things like that. And so we have on staff registered foresters and arborists that work with counties and and others and ensuring that we really are trying to get it to a tree health. It it is an expense and a and a level of effort that we've not seen before in our company. And we're not alone as utilities.
Thanks, that was, that's good to hear and get a broader perspective for the different challenges that we have. You made me think of another question though on this, so I'll ask it now. Do you all work at offsetting the trees that are taken down to provide this utility? Do you guys plant in other areas that trees can can grow without any kind of?
So we work, that's that's a great question. We work very collaboratively and I would say a variety of levels. So for example, the city of Sandy is very interested in working with us and what Tom has just called right tree, right place. And we are providing guidance of what are those right trees, where should they be planted and whatnot. And tomorrow, I'm actually hosting as part of the consortium between utilities and the federal government. Randy Moore, who's chief of the Forest Service. And we work very closely with both the US Forest Service, obviously state agencies, but also B eleven interior and whatnot. So we spend a lot of time working across all aspects. As quite frankly, we're all, we're all in the in the as Bill showed you, we have the the trees that can be, that can are outside of the right of way, that can be affected by power lines and vice versa. So we're all in this together and working collaboratively.
Great, thanks. My last question is actually for you, Maria. And that was with this last slide that you had up, when we were talking about rate increases. When we got the information from you all, it was much more detailed information and it really laid out who was going to be getting the increases. And you mentioned that you wanted to be careful with the pandemic and with the hardest hits, people making sure that they have know that these increases aren't going to be additional burden to them. But when we got the the kind of the detailed list of who was going to be getting the increases, the increases were really focused on residential and small business owners with medium and large commercial operations, like getting a smaller increase and then large commercial operations actually getting a decrease. And just from living through this pandemic and and knowing my friends and family, the folks who live in my neighborhood, and then reading all the news reports about those big corporations who are doing really just fine during this pandemic and increasing their wealth substantially, that doesn't quite track with me. So could you please explain that a little bit more for me?
Yeah, absolutely. So as a regulated utility and as a utility that provides cost based rate making. So basically where our costs are is influences the the kinds of bills that our customers get. And so if you are a large energy user, whether you are a publicly traded corporation or you're the city of Salem or you're a sewer facility or you're, you know, another entity, if you take very high levels of power, you are literally getting power straight off of the transmission line. If you are using power in a neighborhood, then you have quite a few poles and wires, substations. And quite frankly, the bulk of our investment and our most recent investments are in neighborhoods. There, that's where the group has been in Oregon and in our service area. And so our additional costs and our additional benefits have disproportionately benefited all of our residential customers. And they have not benefited what we call transmission level customers or other large customers. In fact, if anything, our cost to serve those customers has gone down because of the quantity of power that they take. And and so that's what, that's how we determine in cost based rate making. So I I don't know if that helps you, but it's a, if you look at the invest, if you look back a couple of years ago, we were investing a little bit more in generation assets, both wind, solar, some thermal plants. And our larger customers used more of that power. And so their bills went up more previously. And most recently, our investments really have been in the distribution system, which is almost exclusively serves businesses, small businesses and residential customers.
Thanks, I can't say I totally fully understand that, but I will maybe leave it for some of my other counselors to ask some questions while I process.
Some more time, it's really around, it's really around who benefits from the costs that we spend, whether those costs are in capital or in expenses. And the and the majority of our costs, in fact, the majority of our costs during the pandemic were to benefit residential customers, not to benefit large industrial customers.
Okay, thank you.
They they buy power at a at a very high voltage level. So it's, if that makes sense, it will think of like bulk purchases. They don't use the, they don't use the equipment that residential customers and and smaller businesses use. And I'd be happy to spend some more time with you, with more time with you on it. Overall, with the level of investment that we have made over the past three years, which is, you know, is over a billion dollars, we were actually really pleased that on average, we were able to keep our prices low. And for residential customers that we didn't get into the, given it has been three years, that it was about six point nine percent was the top end of where I think we were. Yes?
Can I ask when the last time large commercial customers saw an increase in their bill?
We have to go back and check, but I think it was with our last rate case, which would have been three years ago.
Okay, any, yes, Counselor Roy.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is probably for Mr. Yost, but anybody can answer it. During the the ice storm, we heard a lot of feedback from our During the ice storm, we heard a lot of feedback from our residents that, you know, people over in the Salem Electric Service Area were getting their power resourced a lot more quickly than folks in the PGE area. And I was wondering if you could just speak to that. I mean, in terms of the what you presented tonight, I mean, it seems clear to me, but I'm not sure that everybody's clear on why that would be the case. If you could just address that, I think that would be really helpful for folks to understand.
Sure. No, great question. I'll do my best on this one. I think the Salem Electric Area is predominantly underground is what I'm understanding. I'm not that familiar with it. So it didn't have the exposure potentially that our overhead lines did in those areas. So and then also, if you think of, you know, our customer bases, you know, just over 900,000 customers. So and it was spread out, you know, across not only, you know, Marion County, Yamhill, but up to Clackamas, Portland, et cetera. So much larger area. I mean, we had areas hit like this Silverton was hit very, very hard. We had to mobilize. That was almost a total rebuild in Silverton. So it was just a matter of the volume of the damage that we had to deal with. Of course, Maria did mention, I mean, we just we had 150 tree crews. Just to get to those lines, we had to do massive amounts of tree clearing. I think one of the issues that we had, you know, again, when trees were falling over, their whole root balls were coming up as well. So think of this eight foot diameter, you know, plus or minus, you know, mess of and mud and everything else that you had to move out of the way. So much, we had just a lot of exposure there throughout. So I think it just was a matter of volume in terms of the amount of equipment that we had to replace in comparison potentially.
And Councilor Hoy, you're absolutely right. Unfortunately, and it would have been the same if you were looking at a Pacific Car customer, or you were looking at a Clark PUD customer or others, Portland General, and I would say parts of Marion County, not all of Marion County, and even more so Clackamas County. But, you know, we were we were we were we were truly were the eye of the storm for that one. So the weather that hit us and the vast majority of our customers was 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 unique and was not shared by others.
Yeah, great. I think, for example, PAC, you know, restored roughly 44,000 customers in that storm in comparison to our 750,000. So, you know, do the math. It's easy to do the math on that one. It just was sheer volume. And the, you know, again, we brought in, you know, 270 outside crews in addition to the multitude of PGE crews that we had. So it really was just more of a sheer volume, sheer area type of thing.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. And for whatever reason, out here in East Salem, my power didn't go out once during that whole ice storm. I had power the whole time. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We're lucky.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. This has been, did you have something, Councilor Phillips, that you need answered?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I appreciate the excellent questions by my fellow counselors. So many of my questions have been mostly answered. You know, one thing I just I really want to highlight is something that was touched on earlier by Maria Pope, is the medically fragile in our community. So, you know, my day job is an emergency room doctor, and I worked that weekend. I mean, I appreciate the recap of the the scale, the magnitude of what confronted our community, driving to work, you know, to and from those two days in a row. I mean, it was like driving through a war zone with no power. So I understand that, you know, it was a massive undertaking, and I'm really impressed and appreciate your time coming here to kind of recap what all that did. Specifically, when I bring up the medically fragile, is I didn't appreciate how many community members, not just in those adult care facilities or care homes, but just people living at home that are dependent on a wall outlet in terms of an oxygen concentrator or some medical device. And we had an influx of, you know, 50, maybe 100 people that really didn't need to be admitted. They just needed an outlet. So, you know, I appreciate everybody, you guys stepping up, City of Salem stepping up, Salem Hospital stepping up. But have you guys learned any lessons to kind of maybe help those people that are so dependent on those, you know, those oxygen concentrator and medical devices that need power?
So, Councilor Phillips, thank you very much for your comments. And I'm going to ask Wendy to address sort of all the lessons learned and things that we're doing in this area. I would say that there's no question that we learned a tremendous amount during the ice storm. And we also learned a tremendous amount during the most recent heat dome event. And my husband's also a physician, and he was working at Mount Hood Hospital and also at Meridian Park during the weekend, did several shifts that Monday of the high heat dome events. And the hospitals, as you know, from Salem Health, were also overrun during that period of time. And I think we have an entire new appreciation for the medically fragile and the issues that can take place when we don't have electricity for customers. And the high heat dome event, we had very few marriages because of what we did. The but I do think that we're reliant upon individuals or businesses to let us know that they're medically fragile. We have entire systems set up for people who have let us know. And I can't tell you how many people do not let us know. And they're probably like my mother, who refuses to think that she needs help and is now considered medically fragile, even though she weighs 90 some odd pounds. But I think that if there's anything you could do to please encourage people to let us know, we track them, we are very, very specific, and they're prioritized. And Wendy can let you know the additional work that we're doing. But this is this is we have a lot of lessons learned in this area.
Thank you.
I can follow up with Councilor Phillips, but we've done a lot of outreach with nonprofits in particular, and working with the low income agency in Marion County. But I think Maria, an obstacle that she identified that was really clear, particularly the individual, not the retirement homes or senior homes, is that they need to let us know. We can't ask, that's a privacy question. We can't ask them when they sign up or they call in. They have to let us know. And so that's definitely a challenge in terms of identifying those that are fragile and medically fragile. But I can follow up with with all of the items that we've done since this one.
Well, and I would hope counselors, you're aware now that Wendy Belize is a fantastic source of information. And I'll tell you, Maria Pope is also someone, and Mr. Yost, our folks, you can you can really pretty easily make contact with through Wendy to get any kind of questions answered. And I hope you'll take advantage of this. As you can see, they have tons of information and are ready to answer questions. So I'd like to move on now. Councilor Hoy, what have you got?
Just one quick thing, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. But Ms. Belize, could you just tell people how would they let you know? Do they call you? How do they let you know? Let's take advantage of this opportunity to get the word out there.
Well, I think the best thing to do is we have a customer service number. They can enter our customer service. We have reps, and they could say, I want to be identified as being medically fragile, and they'll make a note on their account. And then they've self identified. So calling into our customer service number, and I can provide that.
Great. And I'll tell you what, Councilor Hoy, we'll also follow up on that with some other things that we can do in terms of pushing that information out through through our sort of information sources here at the city as well.
I would also say, Mayor, we want to be transparent with regards to customer prices. We take very seriously
Oh, yeah.
the impact of customer prices. And so if there's any more information you would like on that, or any further discussion, Wendy or myself or any of us can do that.
And we'll follow up if needed. I think your explanation, one of the probably most difficult things I've ever seen to understand is PUC rules and how that all applies to the various folks as you deal with these kinds of rate issues. So I found your description from my actually fairly long experience with this to be very clear, but you have to know the language and what it all means. And I think it takes some time and some experience to catch up on it. So I'm going to move on now. And we'll allow anyone with questions to call Wendy. If you need to find out how to get ahold of her, just call down here to my office, and we'll make sure you make contact. So thank you very much. Really appreciate you all taking this time with us.
Thank you. We very much appreciate your time.
Thank you, Roddy.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get back then to our agenda. For our consent calendar, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.3C, pulled by Councilor Phillips, item 3.3D, pulled by Councilor Phillips, and then 3.3F, pulled by Councilor Anderson. I can.
Who seconded?
Gonzalez.
Jose, okay, great.
And that leaves us, I'd be happy to. That leaves us with item 3.1A, the August 23, 2021 draft city council minutes. Item 3.2A, resolution to initiate vacation and public right of way located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Liberty Road South and Pembroke Street Southeast. Item 3.2B, general fund supplemental budget for unanticipated city expenses caused by the winter storm event. Item 3.3A, critical Oregon airport relief grant application. Item 3.3B, collective bargaining agreement between the city of Salem and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Item 3.3E, providing sewer and water service beyond city limits for a property located at 3480 Blossom Drive Northeast. Item 3.3G, recommended appointments to the citizen budget committee, community police review board, and Salem Planning Commission. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. Is there any, are there any questions, discussion on this? Okay, if the, anyone, hey, if the recorder would call the roll.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councilor Anderson?
Hi.
Councilor Phillips?
Hi.
Councilor Leung?
Hi.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councilor Hoy?
Hi.
Councilor Nordike?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll move then to our public hearing this evening. And I'll open a public hearing. And if the recorder would please fill us in here.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 681 Reese Hill Road Southeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by testimony. The only one that's signed up to provide testimony is the applicant. And we'll begin with Pamela Cole.
Good evening. Before I share the screen, I just wanted to let you know that Tony Whitler is representing the city. She is available in case you have comments, but she's decided in the interest of time that she's not going to make a presentation.
Okay. Okay. No luck?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Every time I've had a hearing, I've had a different setup this year.
Why don't you just take us, I better wait for the city attorney to say this is okay. But could Pamela just take us through the recommendations, Dan, or do we need a whole? I don't know what we have to have.
Mr. Mayor, that's fine. She can just make the recommendation. And then if you have questions, she can go from there.
Yeah, and we have Tony here as well to take questions. So if that's okay with you, Pamela, do you want to just go through your recommendations? Tell us what this is and go through your recommendations.
Okay, you're throwing me. I was all prepared to get it started. So the recommendation is that council approve the annexation. And that would include finding that the petitioners signed the valid triple majority petition, determine that the annexation satisfies the criteria and adopt the order. Change the comprehensive plan designation east of center line of Lone Oak Road Southeast Extension in the future from developing residential to parks, open space, and outdoor recreation. Change the zoning east of the center line of Lone Oak Road Southeast Extension from Marion County Urban Transition 10 to PA Public Amusement, subject to a condition. The condition is that the proposed legal description of the boundary between the public amusement zone and RA residential agriculture zones and the corresponding boundary between parks, open space, and outdoor recreation and developing residential comprehensive plan designations shall be submitted to the planning administrator within a year of the effective date of the annexation, or at the time of final approval of the public construction plans for the extension of Lone Oak Road Southeast, whichever is later, and to apply residential agriculture zoning west of center line of Lone Oak Road Southeast Extension, and withdraw the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay, and just as a broad statement, we're talking about about an 18 acre territory out on Reese Hill Road. And it's going to have some impacts on parks. I see Tony Whitler's here from parks. Tony, do you want to, I'd kind of like to hear what you have to say if you if you want to speak on this. You're signed up as a witness. So why don't you go ahead as well?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. Yes, Resale Road Park is approximately 17 and a half acres. It is identified in our 2013 Comprehensive Park System Master Plan as a location for a community park that will also serve neighborhood park needs as well. And this is an area that has a lot of development and a lot of growth. And currently in South Salem, we really only have one developed community park, and that's Woodman Sea. We have Battle Creek, but Battle Creek really, you know, the geography and the topography really isn't conducive to a community park, the activities that go along with it.
Right. Okay, are there any, any questions for Tony first on the park question? I know that's one that I had, we had gotten some contact. I noticed if you read the report, there was some neighborhood concern, making sure that it was going to be a park and not some sort of a major amusement facility. I think there were, you know, those kinds of concerns I think were allayed. But did anyone have any questions on this? Okay, how about any for Pamela? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think maybe because of the zoning being public amusement, it is a little concerning, maybe to some who don't understand what that zoning means.
Yeah, I thought you did a good job of explaining it in the response that Pamela had written, the planning folks had written a response explaining it. I thought they did a nice job. We ran into the same thing, I think, out at Battle Creek when it was a public amusement zone. I mean, there's, I think people have a vision of maybe kind of a go kart track often. And really what we're talking about is this is our zone for for parks is what we're what we're doing here.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, then I am going to close the public hearing. And Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff for recognition.
Second. Second by Phillips. Any discussion? All right, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Councilor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councilor Anderson?
Hi.
Councilor Phillips?
Hi.
Councilor Leung?
Hi.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councilor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Hi, okay, motion passes. We will move forward then to special orders of business. Counselor Phillips, three point three C, is it? My penmanship is terrible.
I was trying to click on my sound. Okay, so let's see. I move staff recommendation to authorize a city manager to execute the attached IGA between the DEA and the city of Salem for the operation of a narcotics task force in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Counselor, did you want to discuss your motion?
Yes, please. So I'm in favor of this motion, but I just wanted to ask police chief and potentially deputy chief Burke some questions to kind of help the public understand. So specifically, like the state of Oregon has had a change that impacts, you know, personal use of small quantities of substances. And so my question is, has there been any change or need for change in this agreement due to the passage of measure one ten?
Thank you, Mayor, counselors, Chief Womack. Appreciate this opportunity, Counselor Phillips, to talk to this issue. It's an important one, so thank you for that opportunity. There's been no significant change, and that is because this partnership is a longstanding partnership that we've had here in Salem renewed annually. And it's always been focused on very high level, you know, organized drug trafficking organizations up and down the state, not just here within the state of Oregon, but from in and out of other states and even internationally. And so we're talking about folks trafficking high amounts of the most dangerous types of narcotics into our communities, methamphetamine, opioids, and now with the introduction of synthetic opioids like fentanyl, even more deadly and dangerous, leading to more overdose deaths in our community. Those are the type of interdiction efforts that we're focused on here with this IG and this partnership. So there's been no direct impacts from that ballot measure. This has always been focused on much, much higher level interdiction efforts. And also, I must say, it often is associated with illegal guns and violence that comes into our communities as well. And so I think that's why this is still very important for us to continue to be involved in. And it allows us, I would say, that earlier Counselor Nordike was mentioning some of the supportive services around addiction treatment programs and help that's here in our community. We value those just as much. And so I think it's a more effective approach when you're trying to cut off the supply chain at the high level, those folks that are supplying illegal narcotics and profiting off the addiction that it creates and creating space for better efforts around services to victims and those suffering an addiction. So it's more of an overarching dual-pronged approach, I think, to the problem.
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you. Chief, I had a question for you. Um, so you mentioned that this is just something, I'm in favor of this, but you mentioned that this is something that comes up annually. Is this is this something we'll see every year on our agenda?
If I understand right, the history is it's either annual or biannually renewed agreement, so you'll probably see this again, yes.
And I guess I was just wondering, when I saw this, I got this glimmer of hope for my ward, Ninn Neighborhood, who has been struggling with gang activity and drug activity, especially around Englewood Park. And so I was hoping that this would give them some relief. But when you say that this is something that we just do annually to ensure that this relationship stays strong, will they get any help from this in the short term? I think they read this and think, yes, something is being done. I'm going to get help. Is that the case, or is this just kind of going to continue to be the way that we have been dealing with this for so long with the resources that we have?
I think the impact at the community level is harder to measure, because again, we're trying to interdict the drug trafficking trafficking at the highest level here. So I think that the more of the community policing work that we're trying to do through our communication with the neighborhood associations and partnering around problem solving is where they may see more direct impact. It's just going to be hard to measure the impacts at that level with, through the impacts of this IGA, for example.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of following up on Counselor Stapleton and also on your statements, chief. A lot of the incidences, as I've been informed by your staff out here in northeast Salem recently, have, the gun-related incidents have been drug-related as well. And so I think that if this effort is successful in the short end or long term, we will see an impact, because there'll be a decrease hopefully in the number of gun incidents. I know my word and Counselor Gonzalez's word and also Counselor Stapleton's word, to an extent, has seen a huge increase in gun violence this past year. And so I am very supportive of the efforts of this of this partnership and hope that we will see some benefits. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, so thank you, Chief Womack, for your excellent answers. As we discussed earlier today, I think it was mentioned that there had to be a little bit of like reorganization and potentially a reduction in the amount that Salem could contribute in terms of officer hours. And what I'm hearing you say is that doesn't have to do with measure one ten. Is that more a function of our budget limitations?
Yes, we're always making priority decisions on where we're placing our staff. Specific here, what you're referring to is the sergeant's position. We used to have the sergeant position fully dedicated to this IGA with this task force, and we recently had to reassign a sergeant within the department specifically to beef up a professional standards section. I think I've spoken to that before. And so the sergeant that's referenced now in the IGA is only acting in a liaison capacity, not full-time dedicated to the task force.
I appreciate that comment. And just briefly, you know, I care for people in the emergency room who are suffering from like the worst, the worst outcomes. I mean, we certainly have a lot of methamphetamine in our community, but we're seeing changes with the introduction of things like synthetic opioids like fentanyl. So things that used to be potentially like survivable, people thought they knew what they were getting, are less so. Things are just a bit more dangerous. So while I support emphatically measure one ten and efforts to get a sobering center and to treat the personal use issues more in the healthcare model, I am concerned to hear that, you know, we're you know, seeing a reduction of workforce on things that are important, like the high-level upstream organized crime issue aspect of this. So, you know, in the future, I would be in support of raising revenue to increase, you know, your officer hours.
Okay, very good. All right, let's have the recorder call a roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Phillips?
Hi.
Counselor Leung? I'll circle back. Counselor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett? And I believe Counselor Leung? I guess we'll move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to ask your permission to let me return to another item on the agenda where I made a huge oversight. I apologize. I wanted to give the city manager and the fire chief an opportunity to speak to you for just a couple of minutes, and I just intend to do it before they walk out the room. So, Mr. Powers, I apologize. Did you have any announcements that you wanted to make or any comments you wanted to make tonight? I just rolled on through that. I apologize.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. I would call to council's attention in your packet tonight is what we call a futures report. It is the draft climate action plan that you will be reviewing at your work session next week. Because of the amount of information, we wanted to get that out to you in advance of your meeting. The mayor and counselors received a memo from me that was prepared by the police chief and city attorney and and community development director regarding council's discussion of the efficacy of issuing civil infractions in the way to curb the protests that have become, in some occasions, problematic for our community. Our conclusion is we're going to continue, staff will continue to attempt to reach event organizers that will not always be successful. Some organizers do not want to be contacted. And that once an event becomes large, and it becomes large through social media usually, with protesters and counter protesters, that at that point is not effective for us to issue citations for minor infractions that would either take time of officers away from their primary goal, which is to protect public safety or would place our civilian code compliance officers in danger. And then the last item I have is the fire. Chief Niblock is prepared to give a brief update to council if you so desire, Mayor.
Yes, we do. And chief, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure you had a little extra time to sit here with us. We can enjoy your presence, so.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, quick update for you. At about quarter to one this afternoon, we had a an automobile strike, a telephone power pole out on Vita Road Southeast, about the four thousand block, which in turn started a, at the time, a grass fire and a brush fire. And with the breeze that we had today, that quickly turned into a pretty large, a large event. Had about fifty acres involved. It got into some heavy brush and some timber, raced around the hillside and had three or four homes in immediate jeopardy. So crews got out there very quickly and they did what we call a house wrap on several houses to protect them and some barn structures. All in all, had pretty much everybody from our department out there and a lot of help from Marion County, Polk County, a lot of the surrounding agencies, Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office was assisting us. At one point, we requested a helicopter. We did not, at the end, did not need the helicopter until we canceled it, but very quick moving fire. Crews really worked hard to get it stopped, and before it got into the uphill side into the forest there, would have raced up another draw and really put some more homes in jeopardy. So no structures lost, nobody was hurt. And a lot of hard work. Crews are still out. Fire, the fire was contained at about four o'clock this afternoon on the borders. And then, of course, we're working the hotspots in the internal portion of the fire to get all those out. And we'll be out there probably most of the night, making sure that there's nothing gets away from us. And it'll continue to continue to fire. So good work by the crews today, a lot of hard work out there. And fortunately, it wasn't too warm today, but it's still really dry out. So I'd encourage people to really be careful with fire outside. Super, super dry still, even though we're in September, and the fires can really get away really quickly.
Yep. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, chief. And first of all, please extend my gratitude to all the crews for Salem Fire and all of our community partners who helped. So swiftly respond to this. I'm thrilled to hear no one was hurt, not even any structures were damaged. So that's a huge relief. I'm just curious, was there a, is there a burn ban in effect for that region right now?
You know, I think there still is a burn, an outdoor burn ban in Marion County for agricultural burns, those kind of things, backyard burning. This obviously wasn't created by that. It was an accident that created the conditions for the fire, but it really is dry out. There's some people really need to be cautious of if they're doing anything like that, mowing or or anything that has any heat sources, because it can really spread quickly.
And another follow-up question I have, and then I'll be done. A theme for this council meeting has been emergency preparedness, signing people up for that emergency alert system. I'm just curious if you've heard any anecdotes from your crew. When they went out there, did all the affected residents already receive notification of that emergency alert? I saw the emergency alert on Facebook. I had people texting me, and I don't even live in that area. Do you have any anecdotal information on whether the impacted residents had received the information and were evacuating as instructed by the Marion County Sheriff's Office?
I do not. I can tell you that thirty-five residents were contacted. Most of those were door-to-door. So knock and talk to ask them to go now. It was a level three evacuation for thirty-five homes. Those were the homes where if the fire would have gotten up that other hillside, they would have been in jeopardy very quickly. And so we wanted to evacuate them until we could ascertain that we had control of the fire. I cannot tell you how many of them are subscribed or got the alert prior, but I know that thirty-five residents were evacuated and asked to relocate during the fire.
I'm sorry, I have one more follow-up. I'm just curious about these preparations. Is it your protocol to do knock and talks even if people are already signed up for the alert system if they're within the radius in question?
So in the middle of the fire, it's pretty difficult to know who has signed up and who has not signed up. So in that situation, we give a coordinates to the sheriff's office, and sometimes our crews assist with that, the closest residents, and we just go and knock on the door to see if anybody saw them and get them out of the house as quickly as we can, because time is of the essence there. It would obviously be better if everybody had the alert. But there's also times when people have their phones turned off, or they're not charged up, their batteries aren't charged. So we always, we always do a physical presence if we can during those evacuations to get them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I got the alert on my phone. I noticed it came roaring through. Call my attention. It's about this time last year I got the alerts from up in the canyon, so. I'm really glad it went as well as it did. Congratulations to you and your crews, as well as your colleagues from all the other agencies that joined you. That's work. Yeah, that's, that's no joke. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back then. Counselor Phillips, you've got three point three D.
Thank you. I move staff recommendation to authorize the creation of a new street project. Quote, Reed Road Southeast Street Improvements Developer Reimbursement, end quote, in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Fairview Development District to be funded with development district infrastructure fees.
Second.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
No.
Boy, this is good news, Counselor Phillips. Let's hear about this.
It is good news. So I, Director Fernandez predicted that I would be thrilled when this showed up on the agenda. I really appreciate, you know, city staff helping me understand the unique situation with having a district development fee. And Director Fernandez, could you kind of summarize what this is, and then maybe I can highlight how awesome it is?
Sure, thank you, Counselor Phillips. It's Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. So as the council knows, we have a development district fee system for sustainable Fairview. There are portions of the property that are in development now, so it's time to build Reed Road. We are fortunate that one of the owners out there is Steve Ward, who has been a longtime engineer and developer here in town, and Steve likes to do things right. So he came to us and said, hey, I think we should finish Reed Road north of Strong to make sure that the improvement goes all the way to Fairview. And by the way, he had talked to the other property owners to the south and worked out a deal with them so that, you know, most of that piece of Reed Road down to where the project terminuses could also be done. But there were other pieces that were not his portions responsibility. So we looked at the opportunities to use allocate development district fees in the spanner. And then there's also a water line that needs to be upgraded. So that's what this project is doing, is allocating the appropriate money so the project can be completed. So if you look at the back of the staff report in that map, about three-fourths of the length of that road will be completed with this project. And I understand that construction will start within ninety days of this decision and should be complete by June of next year.
Well, that's phenomenal news. I know that the Morningside Neighborhood Association had passed unanimous resolution in support of prioritizing the improvement of Reed Road. And my predecessor and I both agreed, Counselor Nanki and I both agreed that Reed Road as is is a bit of a death trap. So I'm very encouraged that this is, this is happening. This is a big deal, not just for Morningside and Ward Three, but this really, you know, could make things easier for chariots. I know that but this really, you know, could make things easier for chariots. I know that Bob Krebs had said that chariots would have considered using this road as part of their routes. So with these improvements and the eventual full completion at the south end, with one of the developments going in there, you know, on paper, we've got Reed Road done. So I just, I'm so enthusiastic and supportive of this. I wanted to make sure that the residents down here knew it was happening.
Right. That's great. Any other comments? All right, the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leon.
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Enthusiastically, I, I think this is just great. Really good to see this one move along. Okay, Counselor Anderson, three point three out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make the motion, I just want to ask the city attorney, can the maker of a motion move to amend his motion at some point after the motion is seconded? Or should I make my amendments right now?
Well, Counselor Anderson, you can form your motion whatever manner you wish, and then after it's seconded, if you want to amend your own motion, you can.
Okay. Let me try this on you, Counselor Anderson. Why don't we let Counselor Hoy make the main motion and then you can do your amendments?
That's perfect. That's perfect. Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Hoy. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Move the staff report.
Whatever it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council adopt the updated result area descriptions and definitions as recommended by the Finance Committee.
So second. Okay. Counselor Hoy, do you mind if Counselor Anderson starts talking about this?
Well, I'd actually like to speak to it first. I'm concerned that that Counselor Anderson is already trying to amend the work that he already completed. And that makes me really wonder what went on in this Finance Committee meeting if he's already going to amend his work. So I
That's a very good question, Counselor Anderson. This is your work product.
Yes, it is. Well, if it's my work product, I think I'm entitled to to amend it until it's passed.
Well, you can do anything you want if you got the votes, but let's
Well, then I'm going to go ahead and make my amendment and we'll see how it goes. Okay? I move to amend that the result areas in a natural environmental stewardship. The the first sub area is amended to read reduces the carbon footprint of the city and its operation in line with the city's climate goals and conserves energy and natural resources. Then further, I move to revise the third sub area so that it reads plans and designs the city's growth to achieve the city's climate goals and minimize emissions, address climate change and other harmful environmental impacts. That's my motion. So let me speak to my motion. And I also point out the second of the emotion of the motion. I second that emotion. I'm sorry, I'm back to Motown and attempts. The second to that motion is also on that on that committee. And here's, here's my concern. We spent a whole lot of time with Josh Eccleston and the excellent staff at the at the CFO's office to discuss these, and we made a lot of potential changes and they all came through. And I think we were kind of down in the weeds of of looking at the entire plan. And once I came up to the surface of the water and I saw some of the emails, it just seems to me that this climate action goal is so important that we we shouldn't mess around with kind of wishy washy language because we've adopted these goals. We're working on the Climate Action Plan. We're having a work session next week. So it just seems that it's appropriate to add what I think that the members of the committee and I just felt like was kind of already in there. So I, this isn't going to change to me any of our result areas or any of our priority based budget. It's just going to make it more explicit what we intend to do with respect to climate action.
So it doesn't do anything, you're saying? It doesn't change?
Well, well, nothing does anything except it sends a message. I mean,
Okay, is that what we're doing? Resignaling here?
Yes, yes, we are. We are.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, members of the committee, why don't we mention the library anywhere in this thing?
Yeah, that's in the other email. That's in the email, too.
I I will tell you that I've asked Mr. Eccleston, we had a discussion today to discuss the library. And he has a response to why the library isn't a mentioned specifically. So you know, I say we can move on to this motion and then maybe Josh could explain the library now if he wants to, or after we vote on this motion, we can discuss the library situation. I don't know how we do that parliamentally.
Well, we don't have a motion. So right now, we've got your motion. We can close this thing down and move on and expect that in the future, we're going to talk about the library.
Okay, that's fine.
That's the oversight that I saw. I thought you'd really included the climate change pretty well. I I was kind of disappointed in the level of interest in the library.
Well, then
I certainly understand your, because you and Counselor Stapleton spent a lot of time on this that you
And so did Counselor Gonzalez, too. So and yeah, I I think let's move on this. And then if we want to talk about the library, but I think we can't. That'd be my my view of it.
Let's okay, are you ready to vote on this? Anyone else want to talk about this that? Okay. If you call the roll on this, Amy, on this amendment.
Sure. Counselor Leon.
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, we're to the main motion amended. Okay, if you call, I'm gonna call, have you call the roll then, Amy?
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis is absent. Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leon.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi, motion passes. Okay, we will move on then to information reports.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible for Mr. Eccleston to just talk a little bit about the library or do we, if nobody?
Why don't we catch that when we start talking some more about the budget and get into that? Would that be okay? Well, we'll
Yeah, that's fine with me. That's fine with me.
You may want to change this again. There, you know, because there's going to be more time to talk about it and more emails.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone on information reports?
Just a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I do. It's on six B. I want to say that's terrific. The that we're going to have a three story mixed use building with office and multifamily housing. And I think that's a terrific job and congratulations to the planning commission and the developers and everybody who worked on this.
Great.
Then I have one other question, and this is for, I think, Director Fernandez on six C. Every time we talk about the flood plain management, we also talk about how we're taking certain steps that will allow flood insurance to be reduced. I'm just wondering if there's any reduction from what we have done this year.
Not on this one, Counselor Anderson, but we continue to work with FEMA in in reducing our our CRS number, which means, you know, being being stricter. And I think we are probably within a year of being able to come back to council to make some more changes so that we can achieve our next level of of the our CRS rating, which would then represent an additional, an additional discount to to residents flood insurance premiums.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, and thank you and your staff for your excellent work in doing this with the flood management.
Thank you, Counselor.
Very good. Well, our, is, are there any other issues in the information reports? Okay. Then we are finished with our business and we're adjourned.